You guys, this is a letter from Gabe, his official resignation. You said that he was gonna say. Yeah, he gave, so then we can approve it tonight. He'll be here two weeks later. And Reed has agreed to come. So that he's not an AIG teacher, but he's, it's gonna be good.
Yes.
So that gave me a little piece to, that advice in mind. So if we do wanna post it, something happens crazy because it doesn't, you know what I mean? Wanna show the whole thing too? Okay.
Okay.
I was just telling these guys to have readers, so you don't have to worry about themselves for him. So, if nothing else comes, then we don't need that. He's checking with Pelzby now, image of him. Which, that's easy. So Pelzby, so Pat's doing it, so. You know, thirty years, forty years, whatever, and I think he goes up to handle that. So that's gonna be added to the consent agenda. So we're gonna add that to the consent agenda. The resignation. Wait, you've got the whole, maybe it was. You got a garden, I mean, nice place. I'd be lying if I didn't consider it.
That I wouldn't blame you. Far less stress.
That's perfect. You're chucking it right. Is this your, is my, is your world now? We're just happy to be here. And it was like, uh, it's cool. Oh, I gotta, I gotta weather meeting again. What will be good for the morning? This is tomorrow during the day.
We'll call this meeting to order. All rise from National, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, we're gonna call, we've got, um, board members here. Our chairperson is on Zoom. And we've also got Ike Bailey here, as well as Wayne DeBard, and other guests. Do we have any issues to the agenda?
Um, the only thing we have to add is to the consent agenda, we have a teacher resignation that the board needs to take action on, so we can add that to the consent agenda. Otherwise, everything's the same.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So much.
Nicole, we have a second.
Second.
Taken by Laura. Any discussion? All those who pay for say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
I should note for the record that even though Lindsay has ported in, she's not a voting, she was not gonna be a voting member tonight.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Public comments and rebel recognition number five. I think we, somebody wanna talk about the football team? I mean, obviously that's kind of a big deal, it's, somebody more knowledgeable.
I was trying to, trying to get over it. So interesting enough, and so I'll turn to Brooke a little bit too. And I don't know, Lindsay, I think you shared this with Brooke today. Chad Greenway from the, our former Viking, posted something and had a really nice statement. Uh, I think we should share it out to the board when you get a chance, Lindsay. It was really interesting how he followed the team on enough during the year and talked about how that last play doesn't define a team. And it's a culmination of your whole season and spending time with your buddies. And he's, he grew up in a small town, played nine man football in South Dakota, so he said, I know a small town. And he said, it's high school football is still, you know, the deal. And so just congratulations on a great year and, yeah, it was just a really neat thing.
Jared Allen.
Oh, Jared Allen, good job, okay. Oh, sweet.
Had a message for the boys.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, when you get put on Good Morning America and ESPN about, you know, the bad news kinda or the final play, it's kinda nice that these guys are reaching out and sharing that because, I mean, it's like I've said a few times, hey, we're, we're the champions. Not quite, you know, I mean, cause it, yeah, anyway, so.
This was just a fantastic season. You know, they played, just, it was a great game to watch. Obviously, they go the way everybody wanted, but, um, you know, if you're gonna lose, I guess, what a way to lose. The only way to beat us was with some fantastic miracle play, so.
Yeah, right, good point.
That was actually the quote that the head coach used, Mr. Soderbergh, he was there last night at the, at the football banquet, then, so, yeah, just, that was really cool.
Well, I know all of a sudden, I've been waiting thirty-five years as a board member to go back down for a championship game again, so, thank them, so. Yeah, it's about eighty-four, eighty-five the last time when I was down, so.
There's the order back right over there.
Yep, so no, so congratulations again to the football team, Coach Soderbergh and his staff, just a fantastic season, so.
Real proud.
Yep.
Any other?
Yes, Mr. Andreessen in the choir department, amazing concert that they put on, it was awesome. I loved every minute of it. There's over a hundred and twenty boys in the men's choir alone, so they could barely fit on that stage, it was great. And then at the end, thank God, they turned the lights down because when you're surrounded by the entire choral body, boys, girls, everybody, and they're singing Silent Night, yeah.
Little teary-eyed.
So they did a fantastic job, so it was great.
It's great, yeah. And the theater is not big enough to hold a hundred and twenty singers plus their parents. I don't know why we never thought of it when we built it, that we didn't build that thing bigger, so I just don't know what we were thinking back then.
I do have to say, although it wasn't as moving, we would say, as the high school ones, the kindergarten and first grade ones were really, really cute. There were some shining stars taking the show on annual production, so it was pretty cute.
Yeah, and last week we had fifth, sixth grade band. I'm sorry, seventh and eighth grade too, so it was a middle school band concert last week, so I got the pop in there. So, yeah, doing a nice job. So, when I always listen to fifth grade, fifth grade band, you always go, they did a really nice job. They just did, cause they've never played before, so. So did I, I said, you know what, for fifth grade band, that was, sounded really good, so, yeah, so kudos to them as well.
And I did hear wonderful things about the new gym, since everybody got to go see it for those elementary. Yep, um, so that was kinda cool to hear everybody being so excited about it. There was almost just as much talk about the kids as there was the gym.
And I heard it last thing to the Daddy Daughter Dance.
Oh, yes.
Was a big hit, I think they said like two hundred participants.
I think it was over two hundred.
It took a little longer than I think people thought because we had so many kids sign up, which is a good thing, but a lot of excited people to see the gym and stuff too.
Yeah.
Kids have fun?
Awesome. All right, well, we have one, so, one last rebel recognition, and this is for Mr. Ronnie Tang. This is his last school board meeting. Ronnie has been on school board since, well, before I graduated from high school. Twenty-six years, at least, that's what we're thinking. He's been on long enough where we can't remember how long it is. And, you know, it's just kind of a, sometimes can be a thankless job. And to do it for that long, to serve in four different, uh, four different times, is really impressive. And tonight is Ronnie's last, um, meeting as a school board member, and we just wanna present him with this plaque, which says, Ronnie Tang, an appreciation for your service to the Delaware, London, Felton Board of Education, January first, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first, twenty, twenty-two. And we didn't have enough room to put all the dates on there. But thank you so much for your service, congratulations on your final.
So those watching on TV, make sure they know we have cake too for.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to, uh, reports. Six point one, truth and taxation.
Yeah, it's a lot more fun to talk about Ronnie than truth and taxation, but.
Do we need to do anything special in terms of, um, declaring a public meeting or anything like that?
That's already been sent up. And so for truth and taxation, now you can, you have that hearing during your regular scheduled board meeting, so, right in front of you, you can look, so if you can back up, there you go, we're gonna get to the front, so you guys can watch up there, it's also behind us. Do you wanna just see it? There you go, thank you, Brooke, have Brooke helping me out here, so. Yeah, so again, you can have this, so if you wanna just click it right away, Brooke, please, um, to the next page, that's just all us, again, there's, when the Davis Board members, superintendent is, of course, myself, and then Marcus says our business managers. So this is really what it is, so between November twenty-fourth and December twenty-eighth, you need to have it, it can be a part of your regular scheduled meeting, so that's what we're doing. You need to have information in your current year, which we will during this presentation. And, um, we'll talk about, the audit is coming right after this, so it worked out really perfect, so we'll hear all about last year. Property tax and levy, that's in our board packet tonight for you guys to approve and sign off on. Uh, and then it's just to make sure that we understand the tax increases or whatever, if anybody has questions about it and why, and that's what it's about, so you can go ahead and click it. So, who sets the school levy? So this is just some information that people understand. The district tax levy that's either set by the state formula, by legislators, that's a general ed formula, operating capital, current tax, this is all done through the state, and then where it's voter approved, so it could be an operating referendum, it could be, uh, capital project levy, it could be a building bond, so you guys know that we have that. This is our current levy, uh, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three is at four million three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents. You can see last year's there, so we have a difference of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, uh, the percentage change is just over five percent, um, across the state, so this is, so there's a lot of reasons why is it up, well, my home value's up. The enrollment in the school district is up, there's a lot of factors that can affect, especially in an operating referendum, we don't have a current operating referendum at DGF, so if you did and your pupil units went up, your taxes are gonna go up because you gotta pay for a pupil unit, that doesn't, you know, affect us here. We did approve a building bond, so you will see that. But I put this on there because this is something we talked about either the last board meeting or the one before on this slide, and this is really hard to see, so maybe if you wanna turn around and look at this, but, uh, this is a report from the state of Minnesota, the property taxes have gone, just jumped dramatically across the state, the state average is just short of twenty percent, I believe. This will show you some of the counties that were biggest or affected the most. Otter Tail had a, had a, they don't even show it on here, but Otter Tail had an article that theirs jumped eighteen percent. And the reasoning, uh, there's a lot of possible reasons, one of the major reasons is that they're saying the metro. There's a lot of people realizing they don't have to live in the metro to work in the metro, so they're coming outstate and they're buying up properties outstate for, it's not pennies on the dollar, but a lot cheaper than what they're buying their properties for. And so they're selling homes for five, six, seven hundred thousand to a million dollars, and they're coming up into these areas and buying them for three hundred thousand, or a year ago you could buy it for two hundred. So it's affecting everybody. I don't know if you guys noticed on yours, where your taxes went up, my home value jumped by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I've never seen anything like it, so, I live out by the lakes country, and that just gives you a perspective of just the value of a home, I've never seen that in my life, and that's what mine jumped. And so, I'm not selling, so it's not good. But anyways, I'm just paying more taxes, so this is just a snippet, just so you can see what other people are paying across the state and the increases they've seen, because market values have jumped, that, that skewed the numbers, he said, the first time in like decades they've seen anything like this, so. We're fortunate, we're, the county is not seeing the same thing, DGF school is not, one of the reasons we're not, is we have some growth going on. So if you have new growth, that takes that and keeps it a little more balanced, you won't see the twenty percent increase in all the old properties being bought up for a crazy number, we're have new, we have new growth and new buildings and buildings, so that's helping us. The other thing is the stability in our pupil units, we're not, we're not shrinking as a school district or stabilized or maybe up a little, that also helps on that, so. I'm not sure, you guys, what the impact was, but you can see the levy was a five percent. Last year it was, I wanna say, three and a half percent, so it's up a little bit, but nothing, you know, crazy, again, it's not double-digit, so. Okay, uh, the next one, and this is just a, a presenter, or this is part of the presentation from other people in the state, MRAA shares this, you can see Aylers, it's one of their slides. What it's showing you is, this is where the state, the dotted line, the red dotted line is what the state provides for general fund, uh, our formula, and if the, if they followed inflation, and they kept track with inflation, it should be where the blue line is. So what they did is they took the average, the inflation rates and those types of things, and it brought it up, so I think it's eighteen hundred dollars difference, or something to that effect, I'm sorry, twelve hundred and sixty-three, eighteen percent difference, so. What happens when the state doesn't support the school districts to the level of inflation? We still have to pay things at the inflation rate, this is where operating referendums usually can come in. We're one of ninety-four schools in the state of Minnesota that does not have an operating referendum, we're very fortunate. We have building bonds, because we're building buildings, but we don't have an operating referendum, so that's something that, we're very fortunate, so that's good to see. This, I think, is my last slide, and this is our new budget, so, we're gonna hear the audit in a little bit, um, our audit, you're gonna go, yikes, what happened, we're losing seven hundred thousand dollars in our fund balance. It's because all of our ESSR funds, and there's other factors in there too, but the big number is the ESSR funds didn't get transferred over. We have them, so when you look at our updated budget here for this year, you're gonna see a number of a surplus of seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So we can recover our fund balance that didn't get transferred in last year, it should've been balanced, it should've been very close. It wasn't, because it's been transferred in, all of these funds we can use in this budget, so I've been meeting with Marcus, and we are going to, so when we get our, when you get these sheets every month, you know, the, our updated budget, you're gonna start to see this reflected, starting in January. It's not in here yet, we, he didn't get it all shifted, because we have to figure, okay, is that going in elementary, is that going to transportation, is that going into technology? All these dollars that we have from the ESSR funds and all that, uh, are gonna get shifted into the areas where they can, integrationists, or actually, not integration, interventionist, transportation, dispersed a little bit with elementary, middle school, high school, and so what you're gonna see is this, so, hey, holy smokes, they got way too much money, no, I said, I want this fixed in one year, I want that all corrected, so we're zeroed out. If we took all the ESSR funds out of this year's budget and how we've been playing, we were gonna probably have a deficit now of about twenty thousand, as opposed to the two hundred and eighty we had as a preliminary. This is still a little preliminary, we wanna finalize it in January, um, but this is, just to show you, so Derek is gonna show you the audit from Ike Bailey, he's gonna show you a seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollar cut to the fund balance. And so I said, perfect, I'll be able to be in front of that tonight saying, no, it's, it was a transfer thing that didn't happen before the June thirtieth date, Marcus and I have had a lot of conversation about, you apologize that it didn't get shifted, but we can reflect it here, so I just wanna make sure you hear that from me and from Marcus, so, that's that, and I think the last slide is if you have questions. Questions on anything with? Micah, Wayne, Brant, any questions, anything?
I don't have valuations, you know, like your household, but I was looking at my AIG stuff.
Yep.
Pretty much went up nineteen to twenty percent.
Your AIG land in?
The valuation, which you might expect a fairly high increase in taxes, and most of them ended up with like a six to seven percent increase.
In, in taxes, yeah.
In taxes.
Yep.
So that's all basically coming from the county and, uh, special things like Waters said, the school just always was less than it was a year ago.
That's because we passed that, hey.
Yeah, and I think you also picked up that AIG school credit, I think picked up more of it too.
Because that percentage increased, so the AIG land will see a bigger return on that as well, yeah. Yeah, you know, when you start looking at where the taxes are collected, and I didn't put that slide up, because it's a lot of information, but, FAML is one that, um, what they, what they get is seventeen, eighteen percent, and what they have to pay is around five to six percent, so, of actually that goes to the school. So, yeah, that's, I mean, you can get into the weeds quite a bit when you start, cause it's same with commercial, right? Commercial pays a higher rate, uh, you know, a tax rate, and then they also have to pay quite a bit to the school. The resident home person, that's almost a wash, you know, they collect about thirty percent from them, and they pay thirty, about thirty percent, so. Yeah, there's certain, you know, there's winners and losers sometimes in taxes, right? So, I didn't get too much in the weeds on that, but.
All right, well, thank you for sharing from that. We'll move into six point two, the Ike Bailey audit, and I think we'll have to probably take a look on the screen back.
Yeah, Derek is here from Ike Bailey tonight to present for them, uh, I believe when he shares his screen, I think, guys, we're gonna have to look behind us. So Derek, welcome, and, and we'll give you the floor, how's that sound?
Thank you, yeah, let me, uh, work with the technology here to make sure I can share my screen.
There you are.
And. So are you now seeing the slide?
It's, yep, there it is, yep.
Okay, perfect. Well, my name is Derek Flanagan, thanks for having me, I'm a partner with Ike Bailey here to present on the two thousand twenty-two audit, and I have a PowerPoint that's gonna facilitate that presentation. If at any point you have questions, feel free to ask them while they're pertinent to a slide, I'll als, also open it up at the end, so if you have questions, you can ask them at the end, whatever you feel more comfortable with, otherwise, I'm just gonna go through this, this is meant to be approximately a fifteen-minute presentation, trying to hit the high points of the audit, and really giving you some, hopefully some meaningful information about this year's audit. And so, you have hired us to come in and perform an audit of your financial statements. The financial statements are your financial statements, the district's financial statements. It is our responsibility as the auditors to express an opinion on those financial statements. You received a clean opinion in the current year, it's an unmodified opinion is the accounting term for it, which in layman's terms means that it is that the financial statements are free of material misstatements, are prepared in accordance with standards, and fairly presented. So I can see everyone in the room is pumped up about that clean audit opinion in the current year. One thing you did have in the current year, which is dependent on the, the amount of federal expenditures that you have, is you did have an, a separate audit of your federal awards, and this occurs for any governmental entity that expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a fiscal year, and you did spend two point seven million, so you were over that threshold, and so we performed that audit as well in conjunction with the financial statement audit, and they get issued at the same time. The premise is the same, where we express an opinion on the federal awards, however, the audit takes a little bit different tone, whereas the financial statements were very much numbers-driven and trying to make sure that all the numbers are accurate and the disclosures are accurate. With a federal awards audit, we're also taking a look at compliance with your grant terms, and so there's, there's a little bit different tone there, where we're maybe looking at your grant awards to see what is required of those grants, and looking at the compliance with those grants. I am happy to report that you did receive an unmodified opinion on compliance for your major federal awards, so same thing, a clean audit opinion on the federal awards. Now, as we perform our audit, we do report back to you any findings that we become aware of as part of our audits, and so I'll walk through those here quickly. In regards to the financial statement audit, we had three findings. Now, these three findings are recurring, by that I mean, you, you have received these findings in the past, I will also point out that they are very common for business office sizes of your size, where you do not have a lot of employees. To alleviate some of these findings, you'd have to hire additional staff, which costs additional money, and, and so we're, we're not recommending that you necessarily do that, just more so be aware that these conditions do exist. The first is that you've asked us to prepare the financial statements, which anytime we do that as part of our audit, uh, we have to assess that for a finding. Uh, we did propose journal entries as part of our audit, and anytime that occurs, we have to evaluate that for a finding. And then the last one is just that you have a lack of segregation of duties within, uh, the finance office, and again, that's where, uh, you're, you're, you wanna try to separate your functions within the accounting, uh, as, as best you can with the limited amount of personnel that you have, and that's just where, uh, you know, those management and, and the board of directors just has to ha, have that inquisitive mindset, because you are kind of also that compensating control in those situations. Again, very common for business offices of your size, we see those three findings in, in a lot of the district audits that we perform. Federal awards audit, we did have two findings, and these are just, uh, findings related to some payroll items charged to these grants, both the child nutrition cluster and the education stabilization fund, um, and, you know, when we become aware of those in regards to the federal audit, we do report those back as, as a finding as well, and it was just that some, some items, um, in terms of payroll were, um, not paid in accordance with, with what the pay rate was, um, there were just some, just little slight differences. Uh, and then in regards to the Minnesota legal compliance audit, uh, this is related to student activities, anytime that a student activity does not have any receipts or disbursements, so we would say activity for a full year, uh, we have to assess that for a finding, so the one you see for Minnesota legal compliance is just that there were student activity accounts where there were no receipts or disbursements, uh, during the year, so inactive student activity accounts. One thing I wanted to make sure I pointed out was that there was a new standard that we had to implement in the current year, and it's related to leases, and this relates to GAS B eighty-seven is the standard, and I'm gonna try to hit this quickly and, and hit the high points, but, uh, what it did is it required us to evaluate your certain agreements, uh, specifically lease agreements, and the impact those would have on your financial statements was, previously, we, we would maybe disclose the information related to that in a footnote, but now it's, it's coming on to your balance sheet in the way of an intangible right to use lease asset and a lease liability. The impact to your net position, you can see when we implemented the standard, your net position did not change, it's just that more information was on your balance sheet. The big thing with this was, it was just a lot of extra work for both you as, as a district, uh, to help us as part of the audit, and for us in terms of the reporting within the financial statements, as well as us getting comfortable with all the agreements and the completeness thereof. So that was more what I would call the dialogue portion of my presentation, the remainder will really start to focus in on the financial figures that are, uh, inherent within your financial statements. This first one is a ten-year history of your cash and investment position, and you can see in two thousand twenty-two, uh, and this is in thousands, so you had, uh, four million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, and it was down from six million two hundred and forty-two thousand in the previous year, and when I looked at why this balance went down, one of the big factors that contributed to this was just timing of payments and/or receipts, uh, and there were some, uh, tax receipts that you guys received in July of the current year, so after year-end, um, and that, that contributed to this decrease in two thousand twenty-two. Oh, one thing I wanna point out on, on this slide is that we do not include your capital projects cash on this slide, and the reason for that is, we really wanna just try to keep it apples to apples, and if you do happen to have a year or two or three of, of projects, and funding comes in for those projects, it's really gonna sway it up when you receive the funding, and then it's gonna drive it way back down as you spend on whatever that project is, and so in order to have this be apples to apples, we exclude that, that capital projects cash, so if you're wondering why this looks so much smaller than, you know, what the financial statements in total might say, it's because that capital projects amount is not included. it's because that capital projects amount is not included. Little, quick little graph on your ADM served, and why we include this is because so much of your funding can be be derived from how many students you have. And so we have a ten-year history of of what your ADMs are. And you can see in the current year, very consistent with the prior year, with with it being only a decrease of four, but but very, very consistent with with twenty twenty-one. This next slide is your budget to actual, and there is a lot of information on this slide, but bear with me as I try to walk through it. I really focus in on the far-right two columns. The third column is your actual results. And I know you you had previously mentioned the, you know, over seven hundred thousand dollar deficit spend within the general fund. And so this is where we kind of demonstrate that here on this slide. The far-right column then is the difference between the actual results and what you had anticipated with your final budget. And so on the revenue side, you had a one point two percent under variance, meaning that you did not spend as much, or you did not receive as much as you had anticipated with your final budget. On the expenditure side, you were one point four percent over, meaning you spent more than you had anticipated with your final budget. And so that third column there at the, towards the bottom, you can see your net change in fund balance within the general fund was a negative seven hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two. And your fund balance then is demonstrated at the bottom of the slide, just over two million. And we do some additional analysis on your fund balance on some subsequent slides, so I'll save that here till we get to those slides. So again, a lot of information on this slide, but I I think it's meaningful information to show you where your results were compared to what you had anticipated with your final budget. So I mentioned I would get into some analysis on your fund balance and some reasons to carry a positive fund balance. And it, one is that it does contribute to your bond rating in the extent that you have a healthy fund balance. The other is it it can produce income to the extent it's invested. And then the last is just it's that cushion for when unexpected expenditures may pop up, or, you know, there's always those things that that can creep up that you don't anticipate with your budget. And so having that fund balance in reserve can can help with that. This next slide is the definitions of the various fund balance categories. I'm gonna skip over it really quickly. It's just a lot of accounting lingo, but it's there for reference if you do have any questions or would like to look into it. This this slide here is your changes in your fund balance within the general fund, and it has the various categories of your fund balance, just showing you the difference year from prior year to current year. The top is non-spendable amounts. Those result in either items you've prepaid or inventoried items. And then the next, I'll say, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, yes, seven are restricted. And the first one is is related to your student activities, and then the remainder are all just restrictions placed by the state of Minnesota. And so once we've determined those amounts based on the coding of your expenditures, then the unassigned is kind of the catch-all for, you know, what what results after we know all the other fund balance categories, and the unassigned there then is is at the bottom of the page. And so you can see that change again is displayed here in terms of what the change was in the general fund and the fund balance at the end of the year, just over two million. This next slide is those categories, just in a line chart format, but gives you a lot of historical information of where you you've been at over the last ten years in regards to your general fund fund balance. Again, a lot of information there, but more so just trying to show you that trend analysis. The probably most meaningful graph or chart is actually on the next slide, but before we get there, I wanna set the stage. And so when we look at your fund balance, what we do is we perform an analysis on your unassigned fund balance by dividing it by the expenditures within the general fund to come up with a percentage. And you can see the GFOA, which is a national organization, recommends no less than two months, which is equates to sixteen point six seven in terms of percentage, and equates to three point two million in terms of what your expenditure level was for the current year. What's probably more important is you guys have your own policy, so you've set your own fund balance policy that you want to be no less than ten percent and no more than fifteen percent. So you've kind of set that sweet spot of where you strive to be between fifteen and ten percent, and rounded that target, those targets are at between one point nine million and two point nine million in terms of dollar amounts if you were to take the current year expenditure amounts. So where are you at? You can see this next slide shows the ten-year history of that fund balance percentage. And as you deficits, as you have that deficit spending in the current year, you can see correspondingly, this percentage went down. Actually, it equates to two point seven percent in the current year, down from seven point six percent in the prior year. Now, Shannon did mention that you have some grant funding related to ESAR and and the timing of when those expenditures are claimed. This could rise back up if those expenditures are claimed in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. But this is where it was at as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, at two point seven percent. The maroon lines gonna give you the target that you guys have set with your fund balance policy. So wrapping up here, just have a couple more slides. This first one here is we we don't wanna leave a couple of the other funds out, so your community service fund, and this is just a ten-year history of where your year-end fund balance is at. For twenty twenty-two, that number, dollar amount was ninety-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, and it is down from a hundred and four thousand six hundred and twenty-two in the prior year. You can see that community service can kind of fluctuate year over year in terms of the ten-year trend analysis, but pretty stable this last year with a slight deficit spend. And food service fund, this is a trend across many of the districts within Minnesota that we're seeing, is is the fund balance within the food service increasing. And you can see you guys had a pretty dramatic increase in the current year as well. The fund balance as of year-end, three hundred and three thousand and six dollars, up from eighty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars in the prior year. So a nice little increase within your food service fund. You can see the the maroon line indicates the maximum allowable fund balance. I don't want that to alarm you. It doesn't mean you're gonna lose any funding. It just means that you do have to have some correspondence with MDE in terms of how you plan to spend it down in the future. So always good to to be cognizant of that and to be working with MDE on your future plans. They just don't want the food service fund to be a, you know, a storage, so to speak, for lack of a better phrase, of of funds. So they set a maximum allowable fund balance within that fund. Some things on, you know, an audit is very much backward-looking. Obviously, we're looking at fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So just wanna take the opportunity to talk about what's on the horizon. We expect continued grant programs to be a big part of governments. We've already talked about SR three and and the districts, you know, grants that they will have related to that. We expect that that'll continue. We would expect you'd have another federal award audit again next year, based on your spending levels. There is another new standard that will have to be implemented. This last one was on leases. This, the the one for next year will be GASB ninety-six, and it's related to technology arrangements. You know, some examples might be Windows or Microsoft Office. Those types of technology arrangements will have to be evaluated for this standard. And then we just wanna point out that we're always available for ongoing communication throughout the year. Any questions that you have, or we have webinars ongoing, things of that nature, so we can answer any questions, just reach out. We're more than happy to take a phone call or or answer an email if you have questions throughout the year. And that was actually the last slide, so at this point, I would turn it over to you guys to see if you have any questions.
Question maybe, who shared more than him, is that food service one, what's the major reasons for that? Federal funded. Federal funded. And I think Derek kinda talked about that, too. I think most districts showed a significant, because everybody got it covered. So it just, you know, let's say, for an example, we got four dollars for every breakfast served, and it costs us two bucks. Or two fifty, you know what I mean? I mean, just in that one alone, that's a quick kind of analysis, so not hard to make some money after a year of that. Which those days are not over, too, so now we're paying for lunches, so it should come back to normal, so Derek, would you agree with that assessment?
Yeah, yep, exactly. Increased federal funding is is really the driver behind why that's increased. And I can, I can, you know, we do a number of Minnesota School District audits, and it's it's more uncommon for us not to see that increase, is what I would point out. It's very common for us to see the the food service fund balance increasing for districts because of that increased federal funding. But like you said, not gonna continue, so we would expect it to normalize, so to speak.
The other side question, are we gonna get hard copies of this audit?
Whatever you would like, yeah, we can, we can print off hard copies. Just let us know the number that you would like to receive.
Yep, in the past, I think we have for every board member, haven't we? Yep, 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 so we would, we would like that again, Derek.
Sure.
For each board member, so, and and then we need a school copy as well.
Yeah, I'll just, is fifteen a safe number?
That's plenty, um, ten is probably safe. Let's go ten.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. Anything else for Derek, you guys, before he goes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's hard work on the audit. Thanks.
All right.
All right, we'll go on to six point three, World Best Report Report. Mr. LeBard.
Well, this is one of the most invigorating reports. Should've made a bar point with graphics, or twizzers or something. So World's Best Report, World's Best Report Course is essentially a report that's kind of a scoping sequence from kindergarten, preschool, through graduation, just on current career and college readiness, that's totally. And then combined, I believe, four years ago with Achievement and Integration, that was a new one. So there's a combined report, now a summary report. Some of it's about elementary stuff, and this one is actually mostly about elementary. And then there's some secondary, mostly high school graduation kind of things. So essentially, what their, the summary is about is as far as elementary areas that are of need or improvement, and how have we done, and it's percentages, that kind of thing, reading and math. And so, are you on track? Are you not on track? Did you meet a goal? Did you meet some of the goals? So one of them is for preschool. District will increase percentage of children screened between their third and fourth birthdays. The goal was forty-five percent. Our three-year-olds this last spring were twenty-four percent. Why, I don't know. So some of these things I don't know the answers to, I'm just sharing them right now. And then another one is elementary school students who are proficient on all reading, state accountability tests, one degree from forty-two percent to fifty-seven percent. Ours was at forty-six percent, which was an increase, but not nearly the goals. Another one is, okay, so then you have gaps, like free and reduced lunch, you have minority groups, special ed, those kind of things. So those are the main things that we have in our district. One of them is in reading, so for reading and math, free and reduced lunch, we will decrease the gap from twenty-six percent to twenty-one percent. Ours was at six point nine percent, which is really, really good. Now, my sidekick Brittany says that she thinks it may be skewed because we were paying for lunches at the time.
There goes your.
Well, we did, we did really well on it. Another reading one for special ed and non-special ed, we were gonna decrease from twenty-seven percent the gap to twenty-three percent. We made it twenty-seven to twenty-six, and we decreased it, but not in the quote. In math, for free and reduced lunch and non-reading, non-reading students, decrease from twenty-one percent to seventeen. We went from twenty-one to eighteen, close. And then math again, non-special ed and special ed. Again, we're all talking about elementary students here. We're going to decrease from forty-seven to thirty-seven percent. We met that one, forty-seven to thirty-seven. Okay, secondary, mostly what this is, is what kind of program are we doing? What offerings are we doing for students sixth through twelfth grade? And then what is your graduation rate? So our graduation rate, in the last five years anyway, has been, for our district, has not been less than maybe four percent. Last year was a hundred percent. Lots of programming offerings the last two or three years, which is, as far as college and for any kind of things, council and task services has been, has ramped it up a lot.
Reading of those students, whether they're in our district or not, is that one?
Yep, so that's kind of the asking question, so if a student, the count is on October one, okay? So if a kid is in our district, that's on our count, so they could move to another district, and then that score follows them to us. And we are finding that is an issue. Let's see here, so that's the secondary one, that's pretty good. So then we go to the Achievement and Integration, that's kind of essentially the same stuff, but it's it's in elementary. And the reason it's elementary is, so this is year four right now. We were gained three years ago, four years ago, on reading for our Hispanic students and American Indian students. And so what's gonna, what it tells us right now is when I look at it, we're gained again for, so it's a three-year thing. How are you doing after three years? Now we're in year four. This report is on our last year, three of our first, that first three years. And so it's showing that we did not meet again, and so we're starting to set three years. Let's see, so it's actually for reading and math for those areas. So math, MCA scores, will increase from thirty-seven to forty-two percent efficiency last spring. Our Hispanic students were at twenty percent last spring, so not, not good. But again, so not an excuse, but I know, just a little bit I've seen, it's that October one thing. We have a very small group that are transit. Leave, they come from here to Fargo, or head to Texas, to wherever. So wherever they're at, and we take these scores, they follow and get them. Attendance is an issue. We're just talking about this week, those kids tend to not come to school very much either, and so we start with that. Another one is that's the same one. So things that we're doing, I guess, a huge impact so far, we don't see the daddy yet, numbers for next spring, but just watching things and people in motion, our integrationists, phenomenal group of five individuals. Staff have talked extremely highly about them. Just this morning, I met with our inventionist, the special ed department, E.L. We're all trying to work together, who's providing us services so we don't overlap, or we don't try, we don't miss anybody. I think that'll help us. Something we've started doing is we found a lot of gaps in our reading program, elementary-wise, and so probably my next, I think, report in January, we'll probably talk about that. So we've met as a elementary staff through fifth grade, reading curriculum, reading, writing, language arts, English. Just, we need to ramp it up a lot, make a change, so. The thing about that, though, when you do make a curriculum update, it's good, but it kind of stinks, because that first two years, you're sort of trying to drop before they start coming back up again.
Just so you guys know, on the budget that we showed, seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars surplus. Next year, it does have a quarter million dollars for for a curriculum, so there's something in that also, that budget, so. Because it is, for sure, we have some, we have some need, for sure. Any questions?
Essentially, you use the report to, use it as data to look back at what you need to do.
Yeah.
What to add.
We're, we're.
Yeah.
We're.
Yeah. And we get this every year?
Yep.
It's due to the state by December fifteenth, and you have to have a report in your December board meeting.
Can we see one?
What's that?
Can we see it?
Oh, for sure?
Yeah.
So, yep, we can have a printout, yep.
So this has to be on our website, too.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to post it, yep, yep, for sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Seattle give a good report. Seattle give a good report. Gets a good report.
Yeah, right.
On to six point four board meeting report.
Swan was sorting. At Paul's, the office yesterday, personnel, it was personnel. And I'm sure David and Laura have something to share.
It was a short meeting. Well, I think it had a lot to do with the, the MSEA union settlement.
Primarily talked about that. Of course, we've got that, uh, done, there was, um, some wording that needed some changes.
Some language.
To clarify some things, uh, but we're able to get through that and change the agreement, so, uh, it's on our agenda, fortunately.
It is.
Okay, and we have the committee reports.
Very good, on to six point five superintendent report. All right, uh, first thing down there, and I'll try to be quick because you've heard enough from me earlier, but, uh, we have to change our location for the January, for January twenty-third board meeting and the February thirteenth. We have conflict, I think there's games here. Uh, so this is not a great location when there's game going on. So we need to think about where we want to meet. Uh, do we want to meet in a classroom in Glendale here, so we're still here? Because, uh, I think one of the games is probably a, a boys' game, Lindsay obviously is the parent, and if there's other, I don't know. I mean, I just want to make sure that maybe we're here. Uh, so then if people want to come join the meeting too, it's easier to do it because there's an activity going on.
You mentioned middle school choir room.
We did mention the middle school choir room, only because it's open and it just has chairs in it, and it's the room that we used to kind of use as board meeting, and it's just down the hall, and.
True.
How does that sound?
I think that sounds good.
Okay, so we'll just do that for both board meetings.
Recording, should there be two of them?
Yep, I think we, we'll just bring him over the old cart we had here. We'll just set up the cart and the computer again, and we'll.
I don't care.
Yeah. He's going to sit up right now, he's going to watch it.
He's going to run it, isn't he?
He'll have his plaque on his lap, and he'll be watching across him, so, okay. So we'll make note of that, we'll just move it to the middle school choir room, okay? Awesome. Uh, food service, I just wanted to give you an update here, and I've got a few papers here, it is, look at that. Uh, Sean, Shannon Noack is our new food service director, uh, shared some good news with the personnel committee about her. Uh, she has really been tightening up that budget, that's a budget that's in a great place, as you guys just saw, but she's even making other adjustments, so I'm gonna, I met with her, I meet with her every other week. Um, some exciting things is we have a farmer's school grant, and she has worked with, so, she's worked with Farm in the Dell, uh, their local place that has C.C.R.I. employees. We have talked to our special ed department and talking about going out and visiting them, and maybe it's a future employment opportunity for some of our kids. And or at least go out and visit it and find out more about it, she's working with them. Lori and Tim Pender, uh, she's talked to them, they, we are going to serve their honey during breakfast, uh, starting soon, I think it's in January, and Lori has also offered an opportunity to come and teach kids about what the beef system is, and how you get the honey and what it looks like and all that, so that's interesting. Um, Rickford Family Farms, Dowding Thomas Farms, Craig Brunns Farms, she is working. She said we serve about eleven thousand pounds of hamburger every year. This farmer's school, she wants to talk to the Penders, the Rickford family, she's already talked to some of these farmers and these people that I just listed about supplying beef. Um, she's also, uh, so that's exciting, and working with local people to get that to happen. She's also talking about baking bread, and so we'll have fresh bread for certain meals that don't require like, but hamburgers and all that stuff, it's going to be too much, but there are certain ones that she said they can pull off. So buns, there's also, and I'm forgetting something else, that she's going to start making homemade. And the, the soups, I didn't hear at this time, but she'd said that before, but she had something else. Oh, oatmeal, there's a farm in, so it's one of these farms, I don't know which one it is, that I just listed, uh, Dowding Thomas Farms, is that in Creighton?
Yeah, they're east of there.
Okay, so that's the farm that does oatmeal, and so she's talking to them about supplying oatmeal, and then we said two of their egg class, and now Gabe is going to move on, but it's him. But to tie that in, to talk with the Penders about the honey and talk about the beef, and then, okay, and how does that come to school? And then now same with the oatmeal, and she's already visited with them and how we can use that in the breakfast, so. Fantastic. So I just had to share that because I didn't hug her in my office, but I wanted to, so, anyway. Uh, district leadership team, just want to give you an update on that, we're going to have our first meeting in January, later this week, I'm hoping to send it out. When I sent you guys the update on Friday, there is like three or four, uh, parents already agreed to be a part of it. We have three students, we have a couple board members that have shared an interest now, so I don't know, we can talk about that later, too. Um, uh, Brittany shared, and I just told Brittany, and then Laura, you had shared later, too, that you might be interested in. Of course, in the district leadership team, we need to have at least one board member, but if more want to be a part of it, or you guys just want to come to the meeting, you're always welcome to, I mean, a board member can always, but. So Brittany, I have you down, too, and then Laura, we can talk, if you want to be a part of it, you most certainly can as well. Um, teachers, uh, I talked to the principals, and they're going to be working with teachers to find out who those reps will be as well. Okay? So, uh, I don't have a date yet in January because I haven't finalized everybody that got a part of it, but as soon as that is, I will send a letter out again later this week. Construction update, uh, I'll all share there is, we had some changes today, and, uh, uh, Comstock has moved on, and we are working, uh, with Minko Construction, with their shop here. Uh, they've stepped up to say they would help us finish the project, uh, in Dillworth as well. Met with them today, uh, they're sending information out to the contractors either tonight or tomorrow morning. And then we're gonna, they're going to try to meet with all the foremen over there, so all those companies and contractors know, excuse me, moving forward that they'll get the contact and work with them, so. Anyway, we're continuing to move forward and, uh, foresee that to be a positive thing, so. Questions?
All right, thank you, Shannon. Uh, we'll go on to number seven point one. Um, regular meeting minutes for both board of motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Hold. Passes. Uh, we'll go up to the consent agenda. Uh, eight point one claims and accounts, uh, Laura, whatever you.
Four hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and nine ninety-eight.
Right. Um, treasurer's monthly budget reports in your packet. Um, we're going to approve donations, uh, from legacy chiropractic, is amount five hundred dollars. For the DGF football student activity count, donation from JTF trucking, an amount five hundred dollars for the DGF football student activity account. Donation from Brian and Trini Seer, an amount of five hundred dollars for the DGF football student activity account. Uh, donation from Chat Lindsay Leach, an amount of five hundred dollars for the DGF football student activity account. Prove the dosh, donation from Lichtenberg Agency, an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the DGF football student activity count. Prove donation from Carrie Mirey, an amount of two hundred dollars for the DGF football student activity account. Prove the donation from Rick Electric, an amount of two hundred dollars for the DGF football student activity account. And then donation from Dusan Bobcat, an amount of two thousand eighty-five dollars for DGF robotics. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
And then Gabe.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Uh, and then also, uh, approval of the resignation of, uh, Gabe LaSilla, the egg teacher.
What's the effective date?
Effective date, the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. All right, do I have a motion? Hold, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or comments?
Why, what's the timing of all the football donations? Like, what's this, what's the goal?
Yep, the, the money was given, uh, to help offset the cost of the, of the state playoffs. So the student activity account, um, they had given, done meals and provided meals for some of the football team, and then their activity count was pretty depleted, I guess, and so, yeah. So this was, this was donated to help build that back up. And this account can be passed on so into next year, too, you know, obviously now they're wrapping up, they did have their banquet. Last night, yeah, last night, so part of it will help offset that. Uh, their state tournament shirts for the boys, uh, they got those covered in this, and, uh, yeah, shirts, and then this, and then their banquet, yep, so. Is there something else?
No, just, we don't get extra funds from the state, uh, when you go to the state.
No, no, it's, no, no, we, uh, we budgeted twenty thousand for state tournament stuff, and so, and it's, so I had other coaches approach me down at the U.S. Bank saying, uh, hey, is there money left out for us to go to state tournament? I said, we'll work it out. So I'm not going to bring it up at the Tooth and Taxation. Anyway.
We had, had the question earlier to Shannon about that one bill for the county.
Yes, so in the consent agenda, so Clay County, uh, we got an abatement bill for nineteen thousand. We're going to pull that out, and we're not going to send that off to them, I want to do some more investigating on that. I did some before the meeting, Ronnie and I were chatting, great question by him, and I was trying to get an answer, and I couldn't get an answer before the board meeting, so we'll pull that bill out until I can talk to the county and make sure I have a full understanding of why that came. Um, it's part of the abatement for twenty twenty-two, it's our portion, or our percentage according to them. Um, I just want to have a better understanding of it, it doesn't, it's not adding up in my head, and so, I appreciate Ronnie asking the question before the board meeting tonight, and so we'll table that piece, so that'll be plucked out. So when you approve this, that'll be excluded from this, and we'll visit that next week, or next, uh, next month, so.
I come off with an end of four hundred and one thousand, three thirty-six ninety, but.
With, yeah, from this here, yeah, yep.
We don't want to approve this four twenty-one, two oh nine, do we, as far as the motion?
Well, we could approve it, I suppose, and then if Shannon gets sufficient information and feels comfortable, I can pay it.
I, I guess what we can do, yeah, I guess it's up to you guys, as soon as I find out more information, I can share with you what it is, uh, and then we can approve and send the check, if that's okay with you, you already want to table it, it's, whatever the board wants to do. The county's not going anywhere, so. But I also want to cover it or get rid of it if we should be, so.
Well, maybe we should table it, and then, uh, go to the next one, just add on to the next one.
Yeah, that's.
I think it's the county's next one anymore, so.
Well, that might be the easiest, just for us to answer some, you know, get some questions answered and go from there, so.
So we'll just subtract that out in a minute, sure, for the. We can just subtract the one bill, which is the amount of bills.
We're going to get your number for you.
Four oh one, three three six, point nine.
Okay. Four oh one, three three six, point nine. Essentially.
Sure you did, you're the, you're our number stand, I feel like you're fine.
And the, the other questions I had, they said we've already gotten, was the banners, and there's a couple to go and fill them after. The Christmas ones go down, so they won't go out yet. And then I was just going to say, I like on the bill from Monarch that it showed rebate checks in some other schools, an area of that issues. Thank you for our, for doing that.
For turning them in, yeah, so the rebates have been turned in here, so.
Do you want that number? So we're going to subtract out this bill.
Mike is going to have to fill your shoes on.
Budget.
We're tabling out.
They don't put on these two figures. We're just going to table, we need another motion? Going to modify your motion, call to exclude that one bill?
Sure, I modify my, uh, motion to subtract that bill to the county, um, modifying it to the four oh one, three thirty-six ninety.
Oh, we'll just say, we'll exclude it.
Excluded, excluded.
The county leaders do it for sure. Do you have a second then?
You got it.
Wonderful. Any other discussion on that? Here you go, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, uh, on to nine point one, extra report bill. Do I have a motion? Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any discussion? This is something we do every year, so I want to, if you have any questions on that. No questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Nine point two, certified final levy. Do I have a motion?
Do we, do we need a number?
You have a sheet in your package. That's the same one I showed on the slide, show me, four million, sorry.
Sure, that's okay.
Ronnie, do you have a second?
I will, or?
You have me, I did, okay.
Second.
Okay, cool.
And have you guys, what is that number? Four million, three eighty, seven sixty, point seventy.
Any questions on the book? Any questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, and then Amy needs to sign that, too. Nine point three, fiscal year twenty, twenty-two audit, do I have a motion? Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Or Nicole?
Brittany.
Brittany. Any, uh, any discussion on the fiscal year twenty-two audit? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Nine point four, world's best workforce summary report approval, do I have a motion?
Sound.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura.
Just, and just so you know, too, for discussion, that we'll make sure to get shared out with you guys tomorrow, uh, so. Well, okay, we, we have it, so.
Any questions or discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, motion carries. Nine point five, master agreement with Indian School District number twenty-one sixty-four and MSEA, uh, union. Do I have a motion?
Total.
Ronnie? I have a second, Amy?
Second.
Any questions on this, and we've talked quite a bit about this in the past, but any other questions on the general nature of this? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Nine point six, non-certified contract, this for a contract for County Ness, paraprofessional, at seventeen dollars, seventeen cents an hour, effective January third, twenty twenty-three, do I have a motion? Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Brittany. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Nine point seven, confidential contract. This is a contract for Becky Roden, for payroll slash H.R., effective January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Sound.
Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Laura. Any questions on this, or can?
I just want to say, we interviewed last week, we had, uh, four great candidates, Brooke Delka and I, uh, and then the interviews, conducted the interviews. Um, uh, Becky comes to us from Fargo Public Schools with nine years of payroll experience, so she's been in the trenches, uh, at a nice, nice school, and brings all that knowledge over to us, we're just super excited to have her. Um, and met with her again Friday afternoon and made the offer, she came back and visited more, and Saturday I got a wonderful text saying, I'll accept. So, very excited, and she said, what do I need to do so the board can approve it then? Four o'clock Monday, so Brooke sent it to her this morning, she signed it and sent it right back, so she's very excited to start with us. She met with Rhonda then, too, on Friday. Her and Rhonda had a great conversation, so that was nice, because this is Rhonda's last week. And, uh, so, uh, again, just appreciate everything Rhonda's brought to this district, and how she's trying to make us, uh, just more updated, and we really appreciate that, and Becky and her, uh, again, had a great conversation Friday, so I'm excited about our, our future and moving forward with Becky, so.
Is Becky full-time?
What's that?
Is she full-time?
Yep, yep. Yep, she will.
Any other questions?
Uh, just one comment, is, this is the time of year that board members should take a look at all the committees that you could possibly be on, and Micah as well, see if there's anything. See if there's anything that piques your interest, and if there's anything that you want to change or add, get rid of, just to have that conversation in back of your mind, so when we do sit down and have a conversation, we kind of know where we would like to start.
Yeah, January will be the reorganization. Yep, good point.
Okay, let's go down nine point seven.
Sorry.
No worries. All those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. The other thing, too, thank you, Amy, for bringing that, I know it was not so important, that's all right. Just to remind her, get back to Brooke on the leadership conference down in Minneapolis, I think she sent out an email today. And then lastly, just close with thank you to Ronnie and your last moments of last meeting. Appreciate your service, and just say thank you enough for giving a lifetime of service to the school, it's really impressive. I suppose it was such an important moment, I should have voted no on that one, because I usually vote no on something. But I thought I had Becky come.
Yeah, yeah, we did, yeah, Becky's going, what is wrong here?
That's awesome. Um, next meeting will be on January ninth, I think the same, you have to do it from here.
Yeah, we can be here. No, but nine, that year, we can...
It's the second one in January, so. First one in February, so. And then policy committee meeting, we'll meet after the board meeting on January ninth.
That's your reorganization.
And you did, well, we did.
And you may not do committees till the next one sometimes, but sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, you know?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll probably do that at the second meeting and give a chance, everybody, we get a chance to meet at the, kind of work session at the leadership conference, although, I fear this later. Lindsay won't be there, but I think we'll get a chance to talk a little bit about committee assignments, what everybody's interested in.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Ronnie, for not quitting two years ago. I just needed to put that on record. Because he wanted to quit and I wouldn't let him. I told him. So congratulations, sorry I'm not able to be there with you tonight. But we, I know we'll see you next December at our board meeting for truth and taxation. So you're not going anywhere, we know where to find you, bud.
Don't any of you quit and try to get me back on.
No, no, we won't do that to you. But we'll work on getting a celebration in January and have Sandy, since we didn't get to do one with her as well due to COVID, so. We'll, we'll celebrate you at a later date, okay, bud?
It's been enjoyable, and thank you, and it's been a little different than before, but I did enjoy it. That day when I visited with you, I talked around that a couple minutes, so we both kind of said the same thing, it's just time, so. Thank you to the district for electing me all these years, so, thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie.
And thank Donna. Thank Donna.
Will do. I'll take a couple pieces of cake home for her.
There you go.
Oh, perfect. I love it. Have a very merry Christmas, everyone. I usually have your chocolates, I'll have to bring them in January, so.
Thank you, man.
Well, during the meeting at seven eleven. That's convenient.